Good evening, everybody. Today is July 11, 2022. This is the work session for the regular meeting of the Mayor and Common Council of the Regent's hearing, starting at 7:30 as it always does. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of July 11, 2022, was included in a list of meetings sent to the Hunterdon County Democrat and Courier-News on January 5, 2022. Posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall on that date and has remained continuously posted as required. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file at the Office of the Borough Clerk Sally to take the roll call.
Mayor Driver?
Here.
Ms. Hand is excused. Mr. Johnson is excused. Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Ms. Rosetti?
Here.
Ms. Tilly?
Here. Excellent. So as you can see, we're scattered kind of all about Tony is on the road from work, I believe. Jess and Malik have both have health issues going on and Jeremy is at home as well unable to attend his person this evening. We do have a work session tonight. We're going to hear a presentation from Lauren O'Brien. She is the New Jersey Campaign Director for the Center for Climate Integrity and the Center for Climate Integrity is doing work to hold the fossil fuel industry accountable for climate change damages. So I will go ahead, Lauren, and hand it off to you on that. Thank you, and you are still here.
Thank you so much. Thanks for having me tonight. Hello. Hello, Flemington. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you for introducing me. That's right, I am affiliated with the Center for Climate Integrity, which is a national nonprofit and nonpartisan organization that helps cities and states across the country hold oil and gas companies accountable for the massive costs of climate change. I have a slideshow to show you, if that's okay.
Do you want to take her control? Hang on one moment, I will make you a co-host so you can share it to me.
Thank you. You can find the Center for Climate Integrity or CCI at climateintegrity.org to describe that organization. Again, climateintegrity.org, and you will see Pay Up Climate Polluters as one of the campaigns and projects under them. And I am the New Jersey Campaign Director for that campaign.
Okay, give me one second. I have to... Well, we may have one too many co-hosts here.
No problem.
You can take me on as a co-host if you want.
I'll give it back to you, I promise. Uh-huh.
There you go. I got her.
Been promoted. Does that include a pay raise? No. Okay. Can you see my screen? You should have some newspaper headlines on there. Okay, thank you so much. So, tonight is about addressing local harms caused by climate change, and these headlines are from the northeast region of the United States. As storms, heat waves, flooding, and more impacts increase with severity and frequency, taxpayers like you and me and those who you hear from in council are hit with the massive bills for not only climate-driven disaster recovery, but also for extremely expensive resilience projects needed to defend and protect our communities. I know that, for example, municipalities in New Jersey are very, very affected by stormwater management, something that everyone can relate to. Changes in local climate create significant added costs for governments, especially with regards to government programs, initiatives, and core responsibilities, such as some of these listed here. This is a very big list, and I don't, you know, I'm hoping you don't have to nod your head for having to do these things, but my guess is that you do. So including changes in infrastructure, adapting to public health needs, and we say even with infrastructure, it's green infrastructure in various different forms, of course, involving transportation, involving roads and bridges and pipes, water infrastructure, all of that, which we know is an issue throughout the whole state. And we also have to worry about risk reduction and emergency response and the aftermath of storms. So I mentioned stormwater management already as a critical issue in New Jersey. At CCI, the Center for Climate Integrity, they also conducted, for example, a cost study on what it is to air-condition public schools. And on June 30th, we had a virtual panel with several elected officials throughout the state during, focusing specifically on upcoming hurricane season, and they were sharing the enormous costs of just removing bulk waste after one storm, which was Hurricane Ida. So this list goes on and on, but the takeaway here is that we need to start being transparent and thoughtful about how much climate change is costing municipalities to fulfill their core responsibilities. I was hoping one of you might be able to answer this for me. That might have woken you up to a few, you know, things that might have just happened. So I was wondering, what is a local storm or weather-related project or experience, you know, that you've had in recovery that you've recently dealt with or that you're planning, if anyone wants to share that?
So Lauren, obviously, we had problems during Ida. We had some, like, 80% of the basements in the borough had some sort of water in them. Thankfully, we didn't have it nearly as bad as St. Lambertville. But that obviously was quite costly. Thankfully, FEMA did help out with that. But as we're looking at where some of those problem areas are, you know, we are looking at some resiliency issues and some flooding issues in a couple areas around town. However, I don't have those costs yet because that engineering is still taking place.
Yep, and thanks for sharing that. I'm sorry, that's a really astounding percentage that you talked about. And so Lambertville is your next-door neighbor, pretty much?
They're pretty 15 minutes.
Okay, yes, also in Hunterdon County. Yeah, another small municipality that's been greatly affected. So, you know, it doesn't matter how small or big your municipality is, the cost can be super enormous, and it's all relative to, you know, your own operating budget and the kinds of other programs you want to be running. You can take a hit because you're using sometimes your municipal, you know, capital funding or whatever to address these issues, that life or death issues. So unfortunately, there are many, many, many experiences like this that you, I'm sure, hear about with your other elected officials who you talk to, and of course, from your own residents. So I also just want to point out that unfortunately, you know, climate change does not hit all of us equally. So this graph here is from the EPA as a national example of structural racism and inequality being inextricably linked to climate change impacts. So we can back it up with data like this. So low-income communities, communities of color, and other socially vulnerable communities disproportionately bear the brunt of climate harms, and they are given fewer resources to combat these climate threats. So for example, those who rely on lower wage, hourly employment, and public transportation will be more affected by service and business closures and power outages and things like that. So there are many factors, of course, that can increase a person or household's vulnerability to climate change, and NADEP has recently identified many overburdened communities or OBCs with their environmental justice law. To recap, climate change is very expensive, taxpayers are stuck with the bills, and already vulnerable communities are hardest hit and slowest to recover. But let me add that climate change didn't happen on its own. It has been fueled by corporate polluters. The emissions that cause climate change come from just a small handful of companies. And since 2014, researchers have examined the relative contributions of different entities towards causing climate change. Studies have found that nearly two-thirds of all industrial carbon emitted since the beginning of the Industrial Revolution can be traced to just 90 individual companies. These companies are referred to as the "carbon majors." And these 90 companies are primarily made up of major oil and gas corporations like what you normally hear of Exxon, Chevron, Shell, BP, and ConocoPhillips. The science is very clear that we are not all equally to blame for the emergency we find ourselves in. And not only did oil and gas companies perpetuate this crisis, these same companies knew about the impacts of burning fossil fuels over 60 years ago. So we actually have on our website, and of course, there are many other websites, all of these documents are digital and available, and certainly happy to give you those links. But we have on our website over 600 pages of internal industry documents uncovered by journalists and researchers, also starting in 2014, by the way. So that's a different kind of evidence, right? Showing that fossil fuel companies like Exxon knew decades ago, as early as 1963, that burning fossil fuels would raise global temperatures and would cause, quote, "potentially catastrophic effects." This in particular, this report, it was from Linden, New Jersey, which is not too far from where I live, from what used to be the Exxon Research and Engineering Division. This was a conclusion of their climate scientist, James Black. They had the very best climate scientists, including NASA scientists even, to study the effects of global warming. So this is just one document, oh, sorry, one page of one document showing that doubling CO2 could increase the average global temperature one to three degrees by 2050 AD, but we're already there. So they even made specific projections about the East Coast. A 1982 internal Exxon report projected flooding on much of the coastline, including Florida and DC. And in 1988, Shell internally circulated a confidential review of the scientific literature on climate change, which references details on sea level rise, local losses of food sources, and damage of natural resources. So what did the industry do with this knowledge? They used it to their advantage and began to prepare their own assets for a warming world. What you're looking at here is a patent from 1974 for an Arctic offshore platform, so to literally adjust to a warming Arctic to be able to keep creating their own products. And also included patents, for example, for raising their oil rigs due to sea level rise. So what they didn't do is disclose the information we've been just talking about to the public, nor did they make any attempt to lead a transition away from burning fossil fuels. Instead, many documents, as I was telling you before, reveal a massive coordinated campaign to lie to the public, to lawmakers and to the media, about the catastrophic impacts of burning fossil fuels, and millions of dollars were spent to block climate action over the last several decades. For example, this went on for 30 years. These full-page advertorials are called, were published every Thursday for 30 years, starting in 1974. What used to be mobile, now Exxon Mobil, took out weekly space for advertisements designed to look like editorials to emphasize scientific uncertainty and climate change, even though they had these expert, renowned, best climate scientists who said the opposite. This is a particularly powerful piece of evidence from 1998. This internal memo is called the Victory Memo. It was an action plan from the American Petroleum Institute, the coordinated front group, which lays out an extensive campaign to convince Congress, the media, scientists, everyday citizens, that climate change was too uncertain to take action on. The plan notes that, quote, "victory will be achieved when average citizens understand uncertainties in climate science." But as a reminder, these same companies were predicting catastrophic events decades prior. Unfortunately, the line continues today. Last summer, Exxon senior lobbyist Keith McCoy was caught on camera bragging about how the company was working to remove climate policy from the infrastructure bill. He also acknowledges Exxon's historical role in fighting climate action with shadow groups and the industry's continued use of trade associations like API to continue to block climate action. They did so to, quote, "look out for their investments." This is Chairwoman Maloney in the House of Representatives. So in October 2021, six of the CEOs, oil CEOs, appeared in front of the committee, the Oversight Committee, as part of an ongoing investigation into the industry's historic and ongoing deception campaigns to stop climate action. During the hearing, not a single CEO would pledge to stop spending money to oppose that climate action. I'm wondering with everyone present here, if anyone has heard of this kind of history before, heard about the history of the fossil fuel industry's knowledge, or seen any documentation? Mr. Long is nodding his head. Heard this before. Okay. And that's interesting. We're hoping it becomes more of the public conversation, because everyone should know this, certainly anyone paying for climate damages should know about this. So, you know, who are the ones who should be paying to cover the cost of climate damages? Taxpayers are the companies who knowingly created and continue to profit from the climate emergency we are now facing, have been facing for a while. Fortunately, we have a judicial system to help us make that determination. So there is a growing wave of lawsuits, all the way from Hawaii to Hoboken, New Jersey, seeking to correct this injustice by shifting the financial burden of climate change off of taxpayers and back onto the companies that knowingly caused this mess in the first place. So there are 20 municipalities, that includes counties, six states, the District of Columbia, and one industry trade association who filed suit against oil and gas companies to hold them accountable for their lies and deception, and to recover the costs associated with recovery and adaptation. This is a familiar story, like big tobacco, like opioid cases, where companies lie about the dangers of their products and must be held accountable for the resulting damage. And there is evidence in the science of attribution, as I was mentioning, of tracing emissions to companies, and there is bountiful evidence in the documentation of what they have known and how they lied and how they paid for those campaigns. Does anyone have any questions about what I've said so far? I know I don't see a chat here, so I just wanted to stop, take a breath for a minute, it's a lot of information. Not yet, but if you have one, please let me know. Okay, so going back to New Jersey, I just want to stress that litigation is an option, excuse me, for any municipality, no matter what their size, and that lawyers are available on a contingency basis to do that, where they only get paid out of a settlement. So I just want to put here that the City of Hoboken passed this resolution to prioritize where that, those funds would go if, you know, they win the case. So this resolution shows Mayor Balla and Hoboken City Council pledging to prioritize the money recovered during litigation towards resilient efforts by the Hoboken Housing Authority. And so these different actions that city governments choose to take with regard to climate liability lawsuits can affirm prior commitments to equity and ensure that frontline communities are well protected from future climate harms. What I just want to briefly tell you all about as elected officials and those who are attending today, just so they know what's happening in terms of action, is that there is like the map behind my head right now. There is a network called the Leaders for Climate Accountability. In brief, CCI works with, as I said, municipalities, counties, states to provide knowledge, expertise, and critical resources in an effort to support the movement for climate accountability. For elected officials, which there's well over 130 of them right now and always growing across the country, it means several things, but mostly it means talking about climate accountability in the climate conversations that you're having, and having people understand that they're not to blame for climate change. So I want to mention too that over 10% of the leaders are here in New Jersey. So if you put in l4ca.org, which I'll get to in just a second, that is the network and the website, you can see all the different elected officials who were there. The kinds of actions leaders take include, say, passing municipal or county resolutions in favor of a state lawsuit, like in New Jersey's case, writing op-eds and speaking to the media about this to educate the public about it, hosting in-person and virtual events, inserting articles into magazines. And CCI provides many educational messaging tools, such as talking points and climate cost data. I'm happy to report a lot of costs, like the ones that the mayor was saying are about to come out. Those are, you know, being released throughout the state now. So cost, dollar numbers are happening all over the place now in New Jersey to start talking about what it is actually costing. And then I just want to say that on the payupclimatepolluters.org website, there are a whole list of resolutions, just going to switch my screen real quick here. So that, let me just do that, you can see an example of, you know, what other municipalities have participated in advocating for this. And while I show that, please let me know if you have any comments or questions I can answer for you.
Council members, do you have any questions, comments?
And please interrupt me if you do, but so here is payupclimatepolluters.org. This in particular is a New Jersey page, and here is examples, I'll show you in a second, of the cost study that's available, different cost studies, climate cost studies. But this in particular, for example, are resolutions passed by New Jersey League of Municipalities, one that started with the Majority Leader in the Senate, several municipal and county resolutions supporting a state lawsuit in New Jersey as the neighbors of Connecticut, Delaware, et cetera, have filed suit already. Sorry, I'm doing that so quickly, but over here, you'll also see this smoking guns is where some of that documentation is. So you can see the full collection here, and there's also always updates on what's going on with these cases, particularly here in another map form underneath. But what I'm going to close with is just this site, l4ca.org, where in particular, oh, I think that's Karen from Atlantic City. So different leaders here and what they do, and some news, et cetera, and the kinds of resources that are provided for you. If you would like a recording of the panel that was last week, or sorry, on June 30th, it's entitled "New Jersey Hurricane Season." It's a virtual panel on impacts and costs that are expected. We talk about different costs of hurricanes in the past and looking into the future according to NOAA predictions, and there's an expert from Rutgers University commenting on that as well. So I'm just going to leave you with my email. Actually, Sally has that, everyone has that, in case you have any more questions about it, but that's the information I have for you tonight.
Before Lauren goes, any questions? Any questions from anybody here, person? A member, a local person online? Any questions from council? Lauren, thank you so much for joining us. I appreciate the time you've given us this evening to introduce...
Yes, thanks for having me.
...what your organization is doing and what we can do as a community to help fight climate change.
Thank you so much, and I'll follow up with you so everyone here gets some information on different links you've seen tonight.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Take care.
So we'll be back at 7:30 to start the regular council meeting. That looks like it's in six minutes from now. Good evening, everybody. Today is July 11, 2022. This is the regular meeting of the Mayor and Common Council Borough of Flemington. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of July 11, 2022, was included in a list of meetings sent to the Hunterdon County Democrat and Courier-News on January 5, 2022, posted on bulletin board at Borough Hall on that date and has remained continuously posted as required. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the Office of the Borough Clerk. Earlier this evening, if you weren't here, we did have a work session about holding the fossil fuel industry accountable for climate change damages. We were joined by Lauren O'Brien, who's the New Jersey Campaign Director for the Center for Climate Integrity. We got our eyes for the House of Representatives hearing. Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Holland for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before you do the roll, I just want to point out to those who aren't personally watching, it looks a little empty up here, and it is. So we have one council member who's traveling but joining us remotely, and we have Jeremy is joining us remotely, and Liz is joining us remotely as well. So thank you all for being here. We do have two members with excused absences tonight, Emily Johnson and Jessica Hand. Do you call the roll?
Mayor Driver?
Here.
Ms. Hand and Mr. Johnson are excused. Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Ms. Rosetti?
Here.
Ms. Tilly?
Here.
Good evening, thank you. So we'll start with my mayors for a couple of housekeeping. We have two public hearings on the agenda tonight, which I'm going to be asking council to table. The HPC ordinance will be tabled at the request of the planning ordinance for the next meeting in two weeks. The Landhold lease arrangement with Catalyst Experiential regarding the sign of the circle will be tabled, until which time they are ready to start actually finishing that work over there, and I informed them of that today, that we would not be adopting it until they figure out how to get that project done, because they've been working on it for three years. Fortunately, we've had to look at the instructions, so that won't happen until they're ready for it to happen. The hotel, I had an opportunity to stop by today, that there's a lot of work going on there, they're, you know, digging out behind the hotel, getting ready to put the footings in. So that's moving along. George Malone from Hoboken Brown Sun did close on Liberty Village last week. I think that was on Thursday that happened. We had a great fireworks show this last week as well on Sunday, Sunday, July 3rd. We did receive $5,000 from the county towards the cost of that fireworks show as well. I'd like to thank Mark Hayne for putting that together. We do have a resolution on the agenda this evening, thinking conformly with council thinking formally as well. Couple items on the agenda this evening, the police station, I just want to talk very briefly about that. A few years ago, when Mr. Cust and I met to reach compromise on that project that was oversized, and part of the issue was the selling of the police station up from under the police department by the previous administration, we were able to negotiate keeping the police on site there until which time we could find a better place. Through a series of really lucky moves for the borough, 200 Main Street kind of came available. What happened is, we had looked at 200 Main Street, that's the lowest line building down, a couple doors south of what used to be the Bed and Breakfast, and a couple doors north of the Main Street Circle. Two years ago, we were looking at getting an easement on that property. The previous administration did put a pest well into that site for potable water, portable water. And as we worked to get the easement, we were unsuccessful. They wanted too much money, it was coming back, and it just didn't work. Then a couple things happened. The owner of that property went to Liberia, where he was beginning to run a campaign for president of Liberia. And then COVID also came. That building's been sitting empty. I don't know how these folks end up in Flemington, but they do. And so anyways, he came back. We approached them again, this time to provoke the water well easement, and perhaps as a location for the police department. It has become very clear that while the construction is ongoing, the police staying at 100 Main Street just is not really tenable anymore. There's water leaks due to the construction of the 90 main building as they disassemble that interior by hand. The utilities are all mixed up within that building, and now as they're digging and all that, it's becoming even more difficult with movement of cars and parking. So we went back to 200 Main Street. The doctor who owns Dr. Dennis DeSalle was back in the country. That happened at the end of March. And we were able to meet with him, we were able to get in and inspect that building. The police chief was with us, the engineer was with us, and we looked at it, and it's really perfect to relocate the police into. It's got plenty of parking, it's nearly three acres of land, it's a wooded lot, and the well site back there is perfect. It was previously permitted by the PEP. That permit was revoked, and we hadn't gained control of the property, so I expected it to be reissued quickly. It's enough room to build a playground, to build recreational amenities back there as well. So the doctor did agree to sell us the building for $1.5 million. As we were getting ready to do that, we did a title search, and we found out that the Office of the Attorney General had a hold on the building. And when I heard from the attorney from Terrace and Angelo about that, she was not hopeful that we would be able to get past that. I reached out to the governor's office, and they were able to work with the Office of the Attorney General to get... I reached out to the governor's office and they were able to work with the Office of the Attorney General to get that whole re-leased for us. Provided that we paid this for buying the building into the State of New Jersey Treasury Fund. And they put it into an escrow and will hold on to it while the doctor works through his legal problems. The Office of Attorney General did see several parcels that the doctor Dan Cassell owns. And so we were able to work that out and get the Office of Attorney General to agree to release it. It was a big move for us. So how are we going to pay for it? Well, we are going to initially bond for the building. However, between the proceeds of the sale of 90 dash 100 Main Street, the American Recovery Plan monies that we received. Our escrow, which is the highest escrow this borough has seen in a very, very long time, we will be able to put the money together. So when the first payment off of that bond comes due next year, we'll be able to pay it off or almost entirely off all at once with the money that we have on hand. So it will be budget neutral. We will be seeking grants and these conversations and applications are already being filed from USDA as well as the federal government and the state government for assistance in helping to build out the building as a police department. Once we are able to get in there fully and do a full inspection, we'll have a better idea as to what it should run us to build it up. However, based upon the construction of the building, it is not expected to be overly expensive. I don't want to make any promises on that. I also spoke with the previous owner of that property, Bill Courtney, and he's going to be sending me some files. He did quite a bit of work. He did quite a, he did all of the environmental cleanup on that property, removed tanks, removed contaminated fill from that property when he bought it like 20 years ago. There is a historic barn, carriage house on the property. It is the intent of the borough to try and reuse that carriage house to house the wellhouse, which will be on site for the on-site well as well. So that's what the thing is with the police department. It's very exciting. I know the police are very excited by it. Thank you for coming to show your support on that. The community seems to be very excited and I think it's going to be a home for a very long time that will outlast all of us, I suspect. As a home for the Flemington Borough Police. It's really just a great building and with plenty of parking as well. Now, I also want to wrap that up, you know, because the Attorney General had this hold on the building, then if we were not able to get and buy that building, it would have been sitting empty for five to six years and deteriorating and becoming a blight at that end of Main Street. And so by us purchasing the building, we are able to keep that building from falling into a state of abandonment as well. Which was a very big concern of mine and the rest of the borough. And the initial inspection does show that it's going to work out great with minimal construction costs to turn it into a police station. Probably do painting, some carpeting on the second floor. It's two floors. I don't know if you've ever been in there on the bottom floor, which is all cinder block construction. They'll be able to handle the day-to-day operations of the police department prisoner processing. The upstairs will be offices for the police and conference rooms and stuff for that as well. And so the bond ordinance, if you looked at the agenda earlier today or over the week, and the bond ordinance, we only got the bond attorney today. It's only the first reading, so there will be a public hearing for anybody who wants to comment on that. I want to address the situation with Family Promise and the Calvary Episcopal Church. It's a difficult situation. Flemington has passed resolutions this year to be a stigma-free town. And Family Promise serves a community which faces a lot of stigma, the unhomed community. And people become unhomed, particularly moms with kids for a number of reasons. Fires, they, you know, Family Promise housed folks after the Hunter Hills fire and the fall floods, which we've seen here. We did have people who had to relocate out of their homes for a little bit after the Idaho flooding. Domestic abuse, divorce, there's any number of reasons people find themselves needing kind of transitional housing just so that they can kind of regroup and do a reset and get their act together and move back in and find and become independent with their families again. That said, I do have a concern about the number of people they would like to put in there with up to 11 plus two, and I have expressed those concerns. However, I will not be voting on this because although I have not attended services there for several years, I am listed as a member of the Calvary Episcopal Church, so I have refused myself. My wife does attend services periodically there as well, so it would be improper for me to participate in that. That said, I've been a little dismayed by all the signs that I'm seeing, the signs lining New York Avenue that, you know, send a message that Flemington is intolerant and unwelcoming of people who might have less than those folks who live in those homes and own those homes. I find it dismaying that people have been calling planning board members, you know, planning board members, while there is an open application, cannot be discussing applications with people. It's almost like calling a juror who's sitting in a court case and saying, I want you to find that person guilty. You're not guilty. They simply cannot discuss it with you. That said, I also quite dismayed at how Family Promise and the Calvary Episcopal Church has handled this whole situation. You know, they could have done a better job of being good neighbors by reaching out to their neighbors in that neighborhood so that they didn't learn about it on a front page article on NJ.com, which is how I learned about it. And two days before, when the reporter called me, said, I want to talk about the homeless shelter going in in Flemington. I'm like, what homeless shelter? I had no clue that this was happening. They had been in here asking for building permits to upgrade some bathrooms and weren't really clear as to what the plans were on that. So yeah, they could have been both sides, their family promise and Calvary, could have been a lot more upfront about their plans with everyone. Probably would have saved a lot of adjective on everyone's side, the applicant, the neighbors, and the borough administration, which has been receiving a lot of calls. There's also a lot of rumors going on out there. Our fire marshal had a call saying it's going to be a drug rehab facility. That's not the case. These are moms and dads with kids who just need a place to get their act together, to do a reset, to get back on their feet and move into a home of their own. I understand that the planning, the planning board public hearing tomorrow will be adjourned till a date in August for the simple reason that they want to make sure they have enough seating to handle everybody they expect to come to ask questions and come to the public hearing. This space only holds 49 people, including everybody up here. If we can't fit everybody into the building, we end up in an OPMA situation and then we have to cancel the meeting in its entirety. The Captiva project up at the north end of town on the Global Agway is hoping to finish tomorrow as well. And we're getting into some statutory deadlines on that as well, so that has to finish. So the applicant's attorney has agreed to adjourn till a time in August and do a bigger location. I don't know if it's going to be the courthouse. I don't know what they're going to do. If you're concerned, you can watch it. You can tune in tomorrow on Zoom for the planning board, at which point they'll make an announcement as to what it is. But I did want to put it out there this evening as well, and I can do it because I am recused from this as well. I hope that in this time that is being adjourned, that Family Promise and Calvary will reach out to each of the neighbors in that area where they want to put that in and perhaps hold some kind of community meeting so they can better explain in a non-adversarial way as to what their plans are and what the transitional housing shelter actually is. The other concern is that they haven't even been in touch with the fire marshal, which is a concern. There's fire safety concern. You know, they're going to, they're going to be putting 11 people in there. There's water and sewer issues that also have to be addressed as well. And the sewage main coming out, the lateral might not be able to handle all that. We have a couple of situations in town that had small lateral, sewer laterals coming out. And because of the change in use with more people using it, it's subject to frequent clogs, and that's obviously a concern there as well. Now, this was the parish house. You had the priest in there and maybe a secretary, so maybe two people at a time. It wasn't all that much toilet paper getting flushed away. Now, there's going to be a lot more toilet paper getting flushed away, and so that's a concern as well. I am pleased, however, as much as I am dismayed by the signs and the message that they sent, I am pleased to see people getting engaged. And sometimes it's one of these issues that takes place that gets people engaged and gets them to come to meetings and gets them to speak up. And so that they know what their governing body is doing. So I'm very pleased to see that as well. I just think it could have all been handled a little better by both sides. That's all I have to say about that, and I am done. We'll go to the only other person, council member here, that would be Kim Tilly.
Good evening. All right. For the fire department, we had a meeting with Ferrera Group regarding the new fire truck. And we'll be meeting with Pierce on the 20th regarding their type of fire truck. Please don't forget the water bottle drive. Pick up an extra case of water while you have to start dropping off here at Borough Hall. I will be matching the first 50 cases donated. We had a Union Hotel redevelopment meeting last week. Tomorrow, a D W meeting. Again, you should receive the Swift 911 call regarding some road work on parking, but now tomorrow. Please look out for road closures and detours. It's Wednesday. Oh, Wednesday? Oh, sorry, Wednesday.
I thought it was tomorrow too. I'm going to give people an extra day's notice. I'm sorry about that.
I attended the Community Pleasing Academy's past two Tuesdays. Report tomorrow's class as it's a great learning experience. If this series is offered again, I highly recommend everyone attending. And then, of course, on July 3rd, Flemington Borough brought back their fireworks show. I was there in my cert passing, and it was a totally different experience up close and personal versus sitting on my front porch box booth. And those booms are loud when you are there. Thank you to Mark Hayne for organizing everything. Flemington 13, Flemington Fire Department, Raritan Township Fire Department, Flemington Raritan Rescue Squad, of course, fire marshal Ken Reforming, providing all the necessary support to have a successful event. I look forward to it next year. Oh, and of course, our Flemington Police Department there. Can never forget that.
Thank you. And next up, we'll go to Councilman Tony Parker.
I'm off mute. I don't have anything to report, but I do have a comment, and that is that as I have been engaging my neighbors just about council and getting involved. I also echo your sentiment that at least people are getting involved. It may not, this may not be the one thing that you want everybody involved with. However, people are getting involved and I've been talking about the initiative that Councilman Jeremy's working on. And I do think we're going to see people, because everybody's nodding their head like, yes, we do need to do something because this borough council cannot do it all on their own. It has to be in community involvement in order to make everything work. So I'm going to keep ringing that bell and trying to get people, as soon as Jeremy, Councilman Long and I get together and start ironing out some things, I am going to start soliciting people to get more involved. So that's what I have right now.
Thank you. Next up, we'll go to Councilperson Ms. Rosetti.
Thank you, Mayor. I think everything's mostly been covered, but I will just like to echo how much we enjoyed the fireworks presentation and thank everyone involved in that. That was really great to see return to the borough and everyone walking around town and attending that night was great. That's all.
Thank you. And doing cleanup duty is Council President Jeremy Long. Oh, and I see Malik is here now too. So we'll go to Malik after Jeremy.
Hey, good evening. So I have kind of a lengthy report here, so I'll try to get through it quick. So July, as far as police news, July 8th, four unknown juveniles entered a building in Liberty Village, causing criminal mischief. Broke a water pipe, emptied four fire extinguishers into the room. This caused activation of a fire alarm. If anyone has any information as to the identity of these juveniles, please contact the Detective Bureau of the Department. On July 6th, the resident advised they received a collection notice for over $1,000 from a mobile phone company. Resident never had an account with that company. It was, you know, unidentified. It was an identity theft thing, so a fraud report was taken. And then on July 3rd, a resident advised their cellphone was compromised and $17,000 was transferred out of their account into cryptocurrency. Both these incidents are under investigation with the Bureau. They're seeing a high volume of fraud cases and identity theft. And the chief had some tips here for folks to just be kind of on top of this because it is a serious, serious problem. Know who you're dealing with, you know, double check with the Better Business Bureau, you know, pay in safe ways. Credit cards are the safest way to pay for online purchases because you can dispute the charges if you never get the goods or services. Guard your personal information. Stay safe online. Be cautious about unsolicited emails. Resist pressure. Legitimate companies and charities will be happy to give you time to make a decision. Don't believe promises of easy money. Fully understand the offer. As a legitimate seller, we'll give you all the details about the product or service. Get off credit marketing lists. You can call 888-567-8688. Your social security number will be required to verify your identity. You can remove yourself from these lists. It does not hurt your chances of applying for or getting credit. And then check your credit reports regularly. So, other events. July 4th, the vehicle was stolen and recovered. Vehicle was taken without consent from a family member. There have been 59 motor vehicle crashes. They're investigated by the police department in the month of June alone. That means that crashes are up. Police Department asks everyone when driving to keep your distance, drive strategically, and don't get distracted. On June 29th, criminal mischief was reported at Viva Mexico for a third time, resulting in an arrest. A huge help and deterrent to these types of crimes is placement of security cameras. Anyone needs, if anyone needs assistance with or has questions regarding security cameras and the placement, feel free to contact Detective Garrett Brandt and he'll be happy to help. Also, the department's asking people if they choose to register the cameras with the, if they could, the Community Crime Cam program and assist them when investigating crimes in town. Police Department, like, thank everyone for coming out to Community Night. It was a great event. And the July 3rd fireworks went off with a bang. Great event and no incidents during the event. FCP news, I got a whole bunch. We have had incredible, very well-attended events lately. The Pride Event was a collaboration with DIY, Tori's Cafe, Lone Eagle, Safe and Hidden, and Flemington Fresh Talent. A group of local 100 and central students and recent graduates who perform for the crowds. The Queen for a Night Event on the 30th had a record number of businesses participating and customer participants and raised almost $2,000 for the Ukrainian UNICEF Fund. And everyone enjoyed being out on a Thursday night on Main Street. And next year, we will expand to King and Queen. On Thursday, 7/21, the FCP will be hosting the Flemington Fresh Talent Ensemble again near the courthouse for a night of busking and music. The road will remain open and we encourage you to support our local restaurants and shops. Getting ready for Corn, Tomato, and Beer on August 13th. Have more workshops and small free workshops than ever. Please sign up for our newsletter and use the calendar at www.loveflamington.com to stay in the know. We have yoga, meditation, Pilates, printmaking, herbal medicine, tap dancing, storytelling, live model drawing classes, and bicycle maintenance. Plus new ghost tours on Friday and dog walks on Wednesdays. Join us for some fresh air and community built. And I got a couple of additional notes here. So as part of the NPP grant, Humdoo did a Pretty in Pink Outdoor Improvement Project. And next door to Humdoo, there's a little structure called a Groundhog Kiln. That's being restored as that is a historic element to that section over there, the Stangle area. So you can actually kind of see that taking place. So the signs are going up, parking signs. There's one up at the Justice, for the Justice Center, and then there's one up by the entrance to the parking lot for the Justice, for the county courthouse. In terms of new businesses, we look forward to new farmers market coming to the former Crease Jewelry Space and to Axiom opening late summer in the shops of Flemington. And finally, Flemington Borough has been named a contender in Jersey's Best Magazine's Top Five Best Destinations in New Jersey in 2023 along with Laverbill, Montclair, Worstedown, and Spartan. And that is a nice list to be a part of. All right, finally, as Councilman Parker had mentioned, civic engagement. So, you know, part of my goal earlier in the year was to create a committee for this, and we're going to, we're going to start working on this. So I do thank Mr. Parker for assisting me in this endeavor, and I know we both feel very strongly about the importance of this. We'll be getting a lot more work done this summer. I viewed a presentation from the New Jersey Alliance specific engagement, which I thought was a good start. So the state is really, you know, concerned and making some efforts to feed our democracy, so to speak. So conversation will So conversation will continue. I'll attend more of these meetings. Um so far, there's a strong focus on voting. Getting people aware and engaged enough to get involved in this important facet of our democracy, and I'm working on a presentation that I'd like to give next month. In order to kick things off for the Civic Engagement Committee, some more information's gotta follow. And that's my report. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Next up, Malik Johnson, who has joined us, and I don't know what time you joined us, but maybe you noticed. Emily. I thought you were gonna be.
Hi, everybody.
So happy to see you tonight.
Hi, everybody. I'm a little out of it from the dentist's office, so I have no report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for joining us, however. Uh that brings us to our first public comment session after three minutes each, and we'll spend a maximum thirty minutes uh. Taking public comments. If anyone has anything to say, if you are online, you can click on the raise hand icon. I don't see anybody on the phone calling in. Come on up and uh. Marsha Caro, you know, again, state your name and where you're from.
Marsha Caro, sixty-one all the way out in Flemington. Good evening. Um sorry, it's the last meeting. I wanted to, but I had a commitment. Uh I wanted to stop and congratulate Mr. Humphrey on his appointment as administrator. Tell Sally I'm sorry she's leaving and congratulate her, but I also wanted to comment on the resolution that was passed from Mr. Humphrey as clerk. Um I assume the attorney wrote that Sally has one of these, which is the Bible of clerks. I assume Mr. Humphrey got one too, since he started clerk classes. This is handed out by Rutgers. Comes with your fee for clerk one and covers the whole clerk class and program. And I know you just recently started taking your clerk classes, but you had to have taken clerk one, which it is noted very clearly. That title forty-eight nine dash one thirty-three, which is the Bible of all clerks. Um and I do hold my RMC, um which the resolution quoted as giving Mr. Humphrey through your appointment. Goes on to state, because it's point one, that to the membership half its privileges. Only registered municipal clerks holding certification are entitled by law, by state statute, to get a three-year term. Clerks who do uh acting clerks get one-year terms. They're allowed three of them, one year each, with the permission of the DCA only. This governing body cannot give Mr. Humphrey a three-year appointment as clerk. That is the law. If you want the citation again, it's forty-eight one thirty-three point one, and it is taught in clerk one. It is always on the state test, Mr. Humphrey, so please know it when you take it, um because they always put it on there. Since you're not gonna be doing the ordinance on the wall, I just wanted to comment on the dead plants. Um I went through all of the planning board minutes. The resolutions are not on the uh website. Uh but the minutes were really clear. The company indicated they were going to be planting a variety of species and native species. And dead and live Irish English Ivy does not qualify as a variety of plants, even though it's two colors. Um and English Ivy is invasive species under the USDA, so it is not a native species to New Jersey. Um before you enter into a contract with them, I hope you hold your feet to the fire and make them remove the dead and live English Ivy, which is invasive. And put up real native plants that won't need as much care. They also promised that they would put up an escrow account if this bot governing body was concerned, and I think you should hold your feet to the fire for that too, because they can't even maintain. Ivy, which I wish I could get rid of off of my property, because I pull it constantly. Um that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's one of the reasons we're not uh holding the public hearing and stopping it this evening. It specifically has to do with that dead Ivy and the fact that it is Ivy as well.
And I assume you're gonna amend Mr. Humphrey's contract regarding.
Can I, can I? No, I just, I just said the contract is a one-year contract.
For the clerk.
For the clerk. It's a one-year contract.
The appointment also has to be a one-year appointment as as active.
It's 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 a one-year contract and and um uh it can be extended for one more year following the state guidelines.
So the resolution says that.
I'm just, I'm just stating the contract.
Okay, very good. I don't know. I don't know.
I'll talk to, I'll talk to the attorney.
Yeah, if you have to amend that.
Yeah, no, we just amended consistency with his contract, because that is the intent is that he is acting clerk until he gets his.
I think the resolution said the intent is to appoint him for three years. At this point, he's being appointed to a one-year term as acting clerk, which is reasonable.
We'll take a look at it.
Intent was acting one year until he gets his RFC and then the.
Okay, yeah, the resolution is not clear at all, and of course, I I didn't ask to see the contract, so.
No, that's fine. Well, uh we'll, we'll.
We can always do an amended resolution to make the resolution and the contract more consistent and clearer.
Thank you. Anyone else in person who would like to make a comment? Mark?
Yes. Uh Mark King, twenty, New York Avenue. Uh Mayor, I appreciate your comments on the uh issue over at the church as a resident in that area. We see it when a lot of us did not know that this was coming. This was kind of, everyone was blindsided. And all of us on our street had reached out to the church, the diocese. And not one resident on our street received a phone call back from it. So uh we did attend the planning board meeting and heard what options are when we heard. Potentially putting fourteen people plus two staff, maximum sixteen people in a house, that a single-family house does not make sense. And that's what the residents are, but they're they're concerned is the the safety of the residents, safety of the people at the town. It's not that the residents don't want this. It's just it needs to be communicated on what's what's going on there. So I just wanna be clear that I am one of them, that that's out there, and it caught me off guard of. And but when you've reached out to make phone calls, to get information, and not one person gives you a courtesy call back, people get frustrated. And at the meeting where the lady said she spoke to every single person, knows every single person on the street. She didn't know anyone, not one person, and the organization was not even aware of Flemington Borough versus the family address of Flemington. So I, I think there's a big communication thing for everyone, and I think if communication is key. Communicated to everyone, then everyone's a hundred percent on board now. Is the meeting definite one hundred percent postponed?
It will be adjourned, just because we're concerned that so many people will show up or the planning board is concerned. I should point out that.
So at at this point, should residents still plan to attend, or is it going to be?
You can attend if you want. It'll be announced right at the very beginning of five minutes.
All right.
But you know, we wanna make sure we can get to the captive herring as well, so that's part of it. And and you know what, Mark? I still haven't heard from them.
Yep.
And I'm the mayor.
Awesome. Thank you.
Ms. Stewart.
I was Stewart, resident of Flemington. I was wondering, I too am distressed by the signs that are around. It makes me feel almost ashamed of being from it. It's that, that we don't wanna help people to be helped. So I am stressed about that, and I wish that Mark could get the whole ticket down. You could object to something without being asked.
Well, when someone's calling your back, that's the problem.
That's no reason to be asked.
Yeah, fair.
I wanted to know, where is the county on this situation? Where are the people, the potential residents of this homeless shelter coming from? I've had a couple of calls about they're bringing them from Newark, they're bringing them from New Orleans, they're bringing them from here. I said, I thought, I thought it was a county-wide thing.
My understanding is that there's a family promise in each county. And that the family promise of Huntington County services residents of Huntington County. That is my understanding.
So we do not anticipate people coming from distances to live in our county.
No.
To take advantage of our good schools and blah, 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 blah. It's all very disturbing. But I wanted to know, where is the county on the homeless situation? Because if it is a county-wide situation and we need, and I do believe that we need uh assistance for these people. Where is the county on this?
I don't have an answer to that, Lois. I have not had that discussion with them.
Because it seems to me they should step up to the plate and help with the situation.
So they do help with like with code blue and code red, you know, cold blue, code blue, I wanna say cold, but it's code. For when it's under thirty-two degrees, they, you know, they shelter.
Oh, yes, from like nine to.
Yeah, the overnight, just the, so so we don't have frozen bodies and same thing for when it's hot.
And also, as you mentioned, uh individual male people are not.
No.
There's nothing for them in this county.
There is nothing, even in, well, well, no, there isn't. I thought you meant for a family promise. So that a a a single male would not be permitted to shelter in there.
Right, but is that understand that there's no place for single men to go in the county?
I don't know.
So I'm just expressing those concerns, and perhaps you can bring it to the county's attention.
I will. I will. I I do to show up to a county meeting.
Yes, they they have responsibility to all the citizens, including those who have some difficulties. Now, I wanted to ask about the police station. You stated that almost entirely of the first payment would cover the cost of the purchase. What do you mean by almost entirely? It's two nebulous.
Hey, Bill, can you jump in real quick? Real quick.
Bill?
Yes, sure. I'm here.
Oh, you're not in the office?
No, he's there. So we have like five hundred and fifty thousand from ARP money. We may have spent some on minor things, I think. We have the proceeds from the sale of ninety dash one hundred main. Mr. Costello is another hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars when we vacate the police department, and then we have surplus. So we'll, our discussions previously will cover that that bond payment, correct?
Yes, the um, you know, like you said, there's between those things, there's probably uh at least one point three million dollars between the ARP money and the. The proceeds of the sale of the building. Um, you know, and and I don't know if we're gonna use a portion of water funds or not.
But that's two hundred thousand short. One point three to one point five.
Right, well, the portion of it's going towards uh the the water tower that we might be putting in there. So you know, we could use water funds for that if needed.
Right, I think you need to get a sharper pencil, and when the hearing is on, I would expect a full explanation of exactly how much it costs. Exactly where the money is coming from. That's for the purchase. And I would expect us another uh exploration of the retrofitting, because that is going to be an expensive proposition to get up to the standards that they've set now. For a police station. And I also would like.
Lois, your time is way over. Yeah.
Why, I'm in here.
We have a second public conference session at the end, but no, we will.
The tax situation, I want that discussed also. How much taxes does the borough get?
Well, right now, we're not getting any. He hasn't paid taxes since two thousand nineteen.
But we will get it eventually.
Yeah, we're getting it when we close. Uh any other comments in person? Chief Rattella. Three minutes for you two, so.
I just, uh Chief Jerry Rattella, Flemington Police Department, one hundred Main Street, soon to be two hundred. Um I just wanna take this opportunity and represent the department, obviously, to say thank you to the council for uh moving forward with this. Uh especially the mayor. The mayor and I, you know, we've worked uh. A lot of additional hours to uh find this location, and things happen for a reason, and this uh this came upon us. And this is more than just a police station, as the mayor said. Uh it's a park, it's a, it's a water treatment facility. Um it's a great location. It gets us off Main Street, but yet we're still on Main Street. We're by a major artery. And uh, you know, we really appreciate the support. Uh the conditions that we're in and have been in for quite a while waiting for this uh have dramatically been decreasing. And and we've been taking on more water uh for, uh I've been here for twenty-six years. This will be my fourth location for a police station. And uh three of those four, we've taken on water. So.
There's no flood issues at this point.
Yeah, yeah. So again, I just wanna say thank you, and uh we're here. We're here to work with you and looking forward and take care of it.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments from anybody in person? I see a hand raised from online, uh Dennis Schub. And you can unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's Dennis Schub. I'm at one ninety-four Main Street. And first of all, I'd just like to thank the Borough Council for everything they do for Flemington. It's really appreciated. Also, Sally, given that you're retiring, just wanna wish you the best. Uh over the past year and a half, you've been really helpful when I've had questions. And really appreciate it, and I hope you have a very much well-deserved retirement. Um regarding the planned acquisition of two hundred.
You just.
We lost your shirt.
Dennis, we lost your audio. There, now you're back.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um so really um thankful to the mayor and the Borough Council for um this solution. And I think we think it's great having the police in that building, so the building's not vacant, and hopefully having another potential playground in the South End. Um my questions, and if you could just direct me, it's more educational for me. Um we have very high water table in this area, and you know, it's sump pumps running, and I was just curious, when we do the well, would that potentially help with the water table? Um and and then also with the treatment facility, uh I don't know anything about that. Is that noisy? That was just one of the questions. Um is it noy-
It's not noisy. Uh once a week, you'll hear for a few minutes the generator come on just to exercise itself. Uh I expect it to be a natural gas generator eventually, although I'm not an engineer. Um but normally, you don't hear that running at all, and I'm happy to uh send you or take you to where other wells are operating around the borough, so you can hear that for yourself. Regarding lowering of the water table, um I don't know. I do know that the the hydrologist says it will probably be one of the highest-producing wells in the borough.
Good, okay. And um am I over my three minutes?
You are.
Okay, thank you.
Let's stick around. We have another public comment session at the end.
Thank you.
Um is there any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Uh we have a motion to approve the minutes of the June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two regular council meeting.
Tilly, move.
Rosetti, you'll second.
Okay, uh Mr. Long?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that's approved.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of the June.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Um I'm sorry, Mr. Johnston.
Oh.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you mark this absence, and that might happen again, but we know you're here, Malik. Uh can we have a motion to approve the minutes to June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two executive session?
Tilly, move.
Rosetti, you'll second.
All right, uh. Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti? Please, I don't know if we lost her.
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Right, that's approved.
Excellent. That brings us to our consent agenda. We have four items on it. If we could have a motion to move the consent agenda.
Tilly, move.
I'll go second.
All right, uh, Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
She's on mute.
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved.
Okay, uh that brings us to our regular agenda. First up is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eight, second reading ordinance amending section one four zero four. For a code regarding historic preservation commission. As I discussed in my mayor's comments, the planning board has requested that this be tabled, so they can uh have one more meeting to discuss it and give their feedback on it. We could have a motion to table.
Tilly, a motion.
I'll go second.
Yep.
Well, I'm gonna have that. I think Tony beat beat Jeremy out.
Yeah, it's good. I was there. That's why I'm second.
You edged me out.
Okay, and that's to table it for what?
Wait, till the next meeting, which is uh January.
July twenty.
July.
Don't take me back to January. I don't know where I'm at, though.
Sorry. It's July twenty-fifth.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have to have a vote on that. Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that is tabled until the July twenty fifth. Twenty fifth council meeting.
Next up is ordinance twenty twenty two dash nine, second reading ordinance authorizing agreement on the acquisition of leasehold interest non-exclusive ground lease agreement between the Borough of Flemington and three oh seven L Flemington Land Holdings LLC, property known as block forty four, lot six in the Borough of Flemington, also known as the living wall in the circle. We could have a motion to table.
Tilly, you'll move to table. Will we give us a second on that?
And I just want to reiterate that this will be tabled until what such point that Catalyst Experiential decides they'd actually like to finish the project they started three years ago. I do want to just add also, which I didn't mention in my comments, that every time I've called out to them and reached out to them about the lack of movement, they show up, they work for a month or two, and then they disappear again. So I thought about the township is having the same issue with the one they're building up on two oh two at the corner of a drug by the by the self-storage up there, so I should reach out to them. But in any case, it will be tabled until such point that Catalyst Experiential realizes that they need to finish the project.
So when we take this up again, we'll probably, I think it's best to just reintroduce it.
As a brand new ordinance.
Yeah, as a brand ordinance, we don't have a deep circle to carry it to.
Yeah.
We'll just, we'll have to start the process all over.
Okay.
Okay, we have to call a vote. Yes, I have to call a vote. Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, it is going to be tabled and at some point when Catalyst Experiential makes progress on the project, it will be introduced to do.
Next up is ordinance twenty twenty two dash ten, ordinance authorizing the purchase of property designated as block forty two lot nine, otherwise known as two hundred Main Street, if we could have a motion, Tilly, move.
Council will second.
Any other council comments on this? Tilly, go ahead and call the vote.
All right, Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing on this ordinance will be at the July twenty fifth meeting.
Next up is the introduction of another ordinance, twenty two dash eleven, an ordinance authorizing the consumption of alcoholic beverages in certain areas of the Borough of Flemington, if we could have a motion.
Tilly, move.
Rosetti, you'll second.
So the headline on this, what this is, is last year's state law was changed to allow limited public consumption of alcoholic beverages. We have decided, and this can be changed, we can revoke it if it doesn't work out. And I kind of have had mixed feelings on it, that's why. So this one is very narrow between Stangle Road, between Church Street Extension, basically Lone Eagle and State and Mind Street. Public consumption of alcoholic beverages will be permitted on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday during limited hours. It's just that we're looking at it as an economic redevelopment tool to further activity on Stangle Road, Stangle is already quite busy. If it works and we get more development on Main Street, which we're trying to make happen, we may look at doing it. It's kind of an experiment right now. Westfield has done this, I have spoken with the mayor of Westfield, and there has not been any problems. My concern when this first came up and I was getting a lot of push to adopt it was, you know, obviously, we don't want somebody to sit down on one of our benches on Main Street with a twelve pack of Bud Light and spend the afternoon there. And so by limiting it to this very small area during very limited times, it can help. So say if there's a concert at Stangle, somebody wants to run down at this, at the Stangle stage, somebody wants to run down to the brewery and grab a beer and it's served in an open container, they can run back and drink it, you know, whatever, they can carry it between the two places. There should be some movement soon on the new building next to the brewery, fingers crossed that will come together. Somebody could then go into the brewery and buy a beer and then walk over to what we hope will be the ultimate development there, which I'm not quite ready to say what it will be yet because things are still being negotiated between private parties. And they can do that legally and that way they won't have to worry about Corporal McNally pulling him over and giving them a ticket for having an open beer. And if it doesn't work out, we'll we'll revoke it. If it becomes unmanageable, I don't have an issue taking it away either. What we give is, we can take it. Can we have a vote?
I have a comment. Yes, the only thing that concerns me is the Fridays starting at one P M. I mean, we do still have schoolchildren walking on Main Street. Walking home.
This will not cover Main Street unless it's a event going on.
Okay.
But you have a crossing there on Mind Street.
It would end at the corner, you wouldn't be able to cross Mind Street.
But the kids have to cross Mind Street to go home.
No kids live on Stangle, right?
No, not on Stangle.
The the beer service would end at Stangle in Mind, at the crosswalk, at the intersection.
So then the Main Street hours will be as provided for.
There's nothing.
Yeah.
There's nothing on Main Street. Yeah, we didn't include Main Street.
We left it out.
Yeah, the thought was whenever there is something going on on Main Street where people would be having an open container, they're getting a, an event permit or closing down the street.
Okay.
And they have A B C.
All right, I just wanted to make sure.
I went back and forth on that.
Yeah, we didn't think there was any need to include Main Street right now because the only time things like this are happening is when they have a separate AC permit and usually the streets.
And it does not, it does not cover open containers.
This is a first reading, right?
What?
Is it first reading? This is the first reading?
It's a first reading, yes.
So can I just clarify, because I I think I'm missing something here? Is it, is it that we, that is the open container from I got from Mind Street? So it's just that shopping center quote unquote where the where the the coffee house is, the the Stangle, whatever, the with a.
Two.
Yeah, all of that, and then all the way down to Lone Star. But going to the point of one o'clock, but going to the point of one o'clock, aren't there like dance academies and things like that on that side and also in that center?
I don't know that I've ever seen any of those kids walk. I think they're all have been accompanied by a parent. I was more concerned with the school kids walking after school.
Okay, but hold on, timeout, because my point of it is, but you still have kids from it. So I I think there's two, two schools of thought here, right? There's an ice cream place there, and so kids do walk to the ice cream place, right? Because I've seen them there. And then there's a dance academy there and some do walk, some get dropped off. I think the concern is, and I'm going back to the address, the concern at one o'clock on a Friday, that just seems. I I I, for me, I just think that that's a stretch. I, what what difference does it make at one o'clock or at four o'clock in the afternoon? I I'm just trying to understand what's the difference? It doesn't make a difference at one, does it make a difference at three? Does it make a difference at four? I'm just concerned about kids. And some of these kids will get, you know, if they have beer, whatever the case may be, because because they're kids and it does happen, right? I mean, that's, that's just the law of nature. So are we creating a, are we creating a monster when we don't really have to? But in terms of the timing, I'm just throwing it out.
Okay, would you like to amend, would you like to amend the ordinance to like four o'clock? We can do that.
I think we should, I I think one o'clock is just way too early.
Yeah, so can we have a motion to amend the ordinance to start at four P M on Fridays?
Long will move to amend.
I'm sorry, do you want it to be four P M Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or just four P M Friday?
Just four P M Friday. I'm sorry, Millie?
I'll second it, I'll second it generally.
Who moved it?
I think Tony did.
Okay.
Tony, I don't know, did Jeremy move it?
I I did.
Jeremy did.
And that's over you.
So Jeremy moved and then Malik seconded a motion to amend the ordinance so that the hours start at four P M on Friday rather than one P M on Friday. But the Saturday and Sunday hours, let's say.
The Sunday starts at eleven, isn't that like late?
Um, is there, I gotta call the vote on this, right? Hang on, we have.
Things end at ten, just because people time their wrap up.
But I mean, to me, Saturday, Friday nights, eleven o'clock, fine, but Sunday nights, you know, it's it's a quiet night at home. I mean, people don't.
Nothing's open, so. Where they even get it from? We can amend that too. I mean, obviously, Westfield is a different town, this was modeled on the Westfield ordinance.
Too late, too late on a Sunday night, five one hour. I choose. No.
Well, there is a northeast ordinance in town, so.
Yeah, that is a ten, right? And we're starting since ten P M, but Friday's and Saturday's again, you know, that's an area where there aren't a lot of residents, but. Do you want to do a second motion?
Yeah, we can do a second motion, I I.
We haven't voted on the first motion yet. So I was.
Well, or do we just want one to change the hours on?
Do you guys want to withdraw your motion and second on that first amendment and then expand the amendment?
Make it six P M on Sunday.
Yeah, I'll I'll resend, so.
Early fast.
Eight P M on Sundays?
Eight or nine, eight.
Draw your second.
Just so we can add the Sunday amendment.
Can I ask Jeremy, one of the FCP events on Sundays, when do they usually end?
When do they end, or sorry, I didn't hear you.
End on a Sunday. When do they usually?
They're not late, I can't, I'm trying to think of an example when that was on a Sunday.
You know what time Lone Eagle closes on Sundays?
Six P M.
Oh, definitely, it's at six.
So let's just wait.
Okay.
We can always change it.
I I I'm I'm sorry, so we're talking about.
So we, so you have withdrawn the first amendment motion and second. So if somebody would like to make a second amendment, second motion to amend, start time Friday, four P M, end time Sunday, eight P M.
Tilly, move.
Johnson, second.
Call the vote, please, on the amendment.
Okay, so, Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, so the ordinance eleven is now amended so that the hours reflect a start at four P M on Fridays and the hours end at eight P M on Sunday.
We could have a motion to move the first reading onward to a public hearing.
Tilly, move.
Long will second.
We made Liz already, and then.
Kim moved and Liz seconded the original motion.
Yeah, what we did was we we moved it, seconded, and then inside that motion, we made a motion to amend which are permitted to do via Roberts rules.
Right.
You just have to call.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't get new motions.
No, you don't, right?
Yeah, you're permitted, that wants to make a motion, and within that motion, you can amend. It's like a, it's like a little motion sandwich.
All right, I'm gonna call the vote now. All right, as amended, Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that has been introduced. The public hearing on this ordinance will be on July twenty fifth.
One of our longest meetings. Next up is resolution twenty twenty two dash one six, no, I skipped one, ordinance twenty twenty two dash twelve. This is the bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of payment of the purchase price for certain real property commonly known as two hundred Main Street bind in the Borough of Flemington in the county of Canton, in the state of New Jersey appropriating one million five hundred and fifty thousand, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of one million four hundred and seventy six, one hundred and ninety dollars bonds or doubts of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Tilly, move.
There's a second?
Tony, a second.
Okay, can I have a vote?
All righty. Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that's been introduced, the public hearing will also be on July twenty fifth.
That's not a thirty day? Bond?
The bond, yeah, that happens.
Oh, wow.
I know, Sally, you see, you wanted to get this done before you retired.
I'm sorry, so it won't be the twenty fifth, it'll be like August eleventh. August meeting will be August eighth.
August eighth.
How do you do, how do you do twenty to ten without having authorized a bond purchase? You really need to do them together. Sorry.
We have to approve the sale first, I believe.
We have to do the sale.
Then we do the bond.
Because without the ordinance approving, the bond attorney has nothing to tell us, to say we're purchasing. But then the, they're gonna give us enough time, it stays already the eleven, the first meeting in August is the eighth.
That's, I'm, you did count days here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's twenty eight days from today.
It'll have to be pushed up to the second.
It's twenty second, right?
August twenty second, and we should push off then the public hearing for the purchase of the twenty second.
Well, the all the closing, as per the contract, is going to be contingent upon the borough having all the appropriate funds in place.
This got added late in today, the bond, we just got it back to bond attorneys.
So we would be able to, be able to sign and sign the contracts, but we, yeah, we would be able to close until after that bond.
Okay.
Ordinance.
After the approval of the bond ordinance, right?
After, yeah, exactly.
So we're introducing it tonight, but then the approval would be on for August twenty second is what I'm hearing, right?
Yeah.
For both, for both the purchase and the bond?
I think we can do the purchase because of.
The the sales agreement is there, it's contingent on the the funding.
On signing the funding.
Yeah.
So we can sign, the ordinance will allow us to sign the purchase agreement, but we don't have to close.
Yeah, it's not binding until we have the funding.
Right, it's, there's a contingency in there, so if for some reason we didn't get the bond or something happened, we should be obligated first.
All right, so just, just so I'm clear.
Hey, Sally?
Yeah.
Yeah, according to the bond attorney's letter that they sent, it says the bond ordinance may be considered for final passage on that date, which is at least ten days after the introduction or at least seven days after publication. So I guess it depends on when you're publishing it in the newsletter, in the newspaper. It has to be seven days for after that for final passage.
Sounds like a budget, right?
No, it's not.
Twenty eight days thing is for a budget, but this is a, so I can go by what they said, right?
And it doesn't become effective, because bond ordinance is you have to give the time for someone to be a stop, yeah.
Yeah, that's twenty days after.
Yeah, so it doesn't people become effective for twenty days.
So.
So my hearing write that she gets it published tomorrow.
It's, we'll be able to see by.
Get it on the eleventh, they're on the twenty fifth.
So the 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 next publication date for the papers is or is Thursday fourteenth, okay?
And you have time, did you get it by noon tomorrow? You're okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I sent it to two papers, I sent it to the Courier News and the Democrat, in case there's a problem. Courier Courier News, Courier's news is the daily, so.
So when will the public hearing?
That's eleven days after the fourteenth, that's the July twenty fifth. So that's eleven days after the fourteenth, that's the July twenty fifth.
Should we just lay it safe and have both of them, uh, have a, a first meeting in August?
Yeah, I, let's just play it safe, because I'm just. I, I, I know, yeah, I mean, two weeks ago, my email never got through, I sent it four times and they never got it.
Exactly.
So let's do August eight.
There have been some problems with publication, and I just, you know, I don't want us to have to start all over again because it won't hold up, because it's, it's cutting it below.
So the bond ordinance hearing will be August eighth, do we also want the public hearing on the, we don't need to move the purchase contract?
No, we're.
Right.
That'll be the twenty fifth still, right?
Yeah, we still do that at twenty fifth, because it's all contingent, um, and it'll also be, again, contingent upon that twenty eight period running where someone can't appear for bond ordinance, so.
It's been a while since I've had a bond ordinance. We won't, we won't try and close during that twenty eight year. All right, so the public hearing on ordinance twelve is set for August eighth.
August eighth?
August eighth, yes.
And when's it closing schedule?
It's not scheduled yet.
It's not scheduled yet, it's not scheduled yet because we have contingencies to meet, the bond, the bond being passed, uh, if the D H G's office.
Is there a stopper period for that?
For volume bond, stopper period, twenty days? We have tw- after the, um, oh, you mean like if we apply for it, can we?
No, 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 once the bond ordinance is passed.
Go back on it? Oh, twenty days, or twenty days stopper period? So like I said, we will not try and close during that twenty days.
Okay. So we'll think about it, that it will close that towards the end of August?
Yes, let's.
Because I'm gonna be, uh, sir.
Yeah, I, let's hopeful end of August, I'm more I'm gonna say more probably after the September holiday.
If it's adopted August eighth, the twenty eighth. If, okay, so if it's adopted August eighth, I have to publish, which would be August whatever.
I can't read it.
Yeah.
So, no, I'm just, so.
I have to publish, yes.
It's gonna be after, it's gonna be after the holiday.
So, yeah, it's gonna kick it after.
After Labor Day.
It's gonna be after the, the holiday, because also don't forget the money is going to be deposited, like the D H G's office is involved, so it's not going to red light this week.
No, I get it, but they have been moving incredibly quick for bureaucracy, way to press for that.
Bill, thanks for catching that.
Thanks, Bill. Um, so we're good, so the public hearing for the purchase will be seven twenty five, the public hearing for the bond will be August eighth.
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution, next up, resolution twenty twenty two dash one sixty, Mark, this is for you, recognizing the efforts of Marvin A. And arranging fireworks displays in the borough of Flemington, if we could have a motion?
Tilly will move.
I'll go second.
Mark, thank you for your hard work, got to know how many people know this, single mark, single name of the person.
I do wanna say something real quick, that I have been doing it for the last, I think this is the fifteenth year, so it's, it's been a lot of, uh, work, there's a lot of stuff behind the scenes and doing it, you take stuff for granted and knowing who you know and getting things done, but, but for this event to happen that we just had, it takes D P W guys helping out, we were out there in the morning cleaning the fields, police setting up barricades, uh, I think this was the first time we had, uh, active shooter reference, uh, document, stuff that we haven't had to have before, which was put together by Brian. Sally's helped out with the permits and insurances and then the contacts with the school and FAA permit, I mean, there's like so much stuff, and there are the volunteers, like I said, fire rescue, uh, D P W guys, police, you have guys here, no incidents, and that's what we, we wanna have, we wanna bring people in, I think it was probably, what, two thousand people there and show it, show went off and people left, no issues, and that's what we want, wanna have, so, uh, we do have them reserved again for next year to continue the events and, uh, people wonder why, oh, why you gotta DJ and, and that DJ kept those kids active from seven thirty until like nine, ten. And that's what the crowd loves, and the parents are out there dancing with the kids, I mean, it's, it is a lot of community get, get together out there, and I think it was a nice thing and just seeing friends sitting on the blankets, talking and stuff, so I'm glad it was be able, being able to get it back and, uh, doing it. And it did turn out nice, I mean, there's always ways you can improve things and, uh, take notes and for the next one, hopefully it'll continue to move, uh.
It get better every year with your.
They do, it's, it's everybody, and if it wasn't with, like I said, the police, Ken, and it's, it's contacts that I've met over years, that it, it falls into place and, but it is the volunteers behind it, there's somebody directing or leading it, but if it wasn't the people, everybody pulling the ropes and it, it makes it a successful event, there's a lot of people that.
Any other comments from council? Okay, call the vote.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosey?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, and we'll put that on some pretty paper for it. Yeah, sorry, that'll be the half.
That's gonna happen this week.
Paper for it, but thank you very much, appreciate you.
Thanks, Mark.
Work with you, uh, next year. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up is resolution twenty twenty two dash one sixty one, authorizing pressure closure of Single Road for the Corn Tomato and Beer Festival issuing a blanket food concession license. You have a motion? Tilly will move.
I'll go second.
Uh, go ahead and call the vote. Mr., uh, Mr. Johnston?
Which resolution was this, I'm sorry?
This is the Corn Tomato and Beer Festival.
Okay, okay, yes.
Yeah, okay, we're on one six, one sixty one. Um, okay, so you said yes?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes, sorry.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved.
Excellent. Next up is resolution twenty twenty two dash one sixty two, authorizing a per diem rate of up to twenty five dollars an hour for municipal court support staff. We could have a motion? Tilly will move.
Johnson will second.
So our court violations clerk, who we hired earlier this year, has resigned. Um, Alicia, her, as she signs, she lived nearby, she was something I completed when we hired her, and then she moved out somewhere into Middlesex County, and with the price of gas and the lawn commute, she has decided to move on. Uh, while we search for a new one, the, uh, court, court administrator has requested that we uh, authorize per diems to come in and help out, so that's what this is all about, it's just substituting one for the other. Uh, Sally, go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that's approved.
The next up is resolution twenty twenty two dash one sixty three, authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Flemington Community Partnership regarding the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Neighborhood Preservation Program. If we could have a motion?
I'll go move.
Tilly will second.
Uh, Jeremy, can you give us the nickel description here?
Sure, so you may recall, uh, we had a grant from, for the F C P, the N P P, Neighborhood Preservation Program, and we had to draw up a memorandum of understanding, and what was happening is that the F C P kinda had their hands tied, so what happened was the, somebody from the D C A contacted me, uh, Jeff Bueller, and basically the D C A oversees these grants, okay, they make sure, you know, all the numbers are trued up, this, that, the other thing. Um, we just, as the council, make sure that the, the money goes out, you know, so they get a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year for five years to do numerous projects, uh, with this grant. What we had, the original language is, though we may have been well meaning, it was, um, it was too restrictive, okay, it, it tied up the F C P and, you know, the D C A basically said, you know, he actually used the word superfluous, and basically he said, you know, you, you've created more bureaucracy in this by having this, uh, shared services agreement, so you gotta be working. Um, so working with him, uh, and Tara, and we, we were able to kind of put it back together, and what we have now is an acceptable uh, D C A endorsed agreement. And that's it, and now, you know, if approved, that, then the F C P can go about their business as far as being fiduciarily responsible and, and being overseen by the D C A, so we did, we, we, we had actually created, you know, the D C A was up here and we were down here and that wasn't necessary, so that's it.
Call the vote. Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that's approved.
Excellent, next up is resolution twenty twenty two dash one sixty four, authorizing an agreement with C M E Associates for engineering services for the Bluefield Avenue Road Improvements Project. If we could have a motion?
Tilly will move.
I'll go second.
As you may recall, last year, I think it was, a year and a half ago, we received some grant money to redo Bluefield Avenue. Uh, now that we, uh, are getting ready to do the infrastructure that Mr. Cust is paying for under that road, we need to design the road to finish that project once it gets going, that's what this is all about. Um, and so we can use that grant money as well to help pay for part of that project. Sally, call the vote.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yeah.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that's approved.
Next up is resolution twenty twenty two dash one sixty five, resolution in opposition to New Jersey Division of Alcoholic Beverage Controls, special conditions unlimited brewery licenses. We could have a motion?
Tilly will move.
I'll go second.
So during COVID, the A B C, uh, relaxed some, uh, some of the policies, rules regarding breweries and outdoor events and television and all sorts of other things, and they've recently put those back into place and expanded and made it much more difficult for breweries to operate. Craft brewery, craft breweries such as Lone Eagle are vital to economic development in a small town like Flemington, particularly given the backwardness of the alcoholic beverage licensing scheme in the state. So this is basically just a resolution in opposition of these new A B C rules that will be sent to our legislators and Trenton in the governor's office. Uh, many communities this week are adopting the same. Any questions, comments on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a, a comment, just for public record, um, just to state that, you know, through COVID, uh, throughout all this, municipalities have had to be very innovative and creative to, to have stability, and from all this, you know, we learned some lessons, we found potential best practices in, in other areas. To me, I, I don't know why the state can't do that as well, why can't they be as innovative and creative and say, you know what, this was actually a good thing for towns, why would we go back to the old way? So I just, that, that's all I had to comment on that.
So this encourages our state legislators to change the laws surrounding the A B C and their ability to put these new policies into place. Sally, call the vote.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that's approved.
Excellent, that wraps up our agenda, brings us to our second public comment session. If anybody online would like to make a comment, you can raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon, that's either at the bottom or top of your screen, depending upon your operating system. If you are a person who would like to make a comment, Ms. Carroll, step right on up.
Thank you. Um, real, I'm glad Bill's still on, real fast on the, uh, the bond, uh, I just wanted to know if Bill has certified or is, is ready to certify the availability of the funds, if the five percent down payment is in the operating budget, and if in the contract, there is some kind of environmental review, even a basic one, prior to closure.
Yeah, we do have a due diligence.
Thank you, and then the five percent down in the operating budget, um, and whether or not, um, the American Recovery Act funds can be used for this. Has that law changed? I mean, have they changed the parameters to absolutely? Bill, do you know, I mean, absolutely, we can use this, this A R funds for this, because originally it was sewers, it was FiOS, it was broadband, it was road projects, apparently.
Yeah.
So can we absolutely use it to acquire real estate now? So we have it certified from the federal government that we can do that?
Hey, Bill?
Yes, we're allowed to use it for any infrastructure improvements that we need to, they, they did make a change for that.
That includes acquisition, Bill, real estate acquisition?
Yes, yeah, it could be for parks, it could be, you know, um, any, anything currently, they, they made a right before we had to file our final report, they made a change, uh, basically saying that it can be used for any um, government project that we needed.
And the five percent down is in the operating budget?
The five percent down is, is, um, accumulated from all prior, we, we put a money aside in each budget, so it's not just this year's budget, it's prior year's budgets as well.
Do you have it?
Yes.
Um, and then the other thing is regarding this Bluefield Avenue reconstruction, I know it's part of the, um, contract that the developer is supposed to be redoing that road, and he's using all this heavy equipment every day, I think that this is premature to advance, um, doing any work on Bluefield, and if we do, the, the developer should be paying Borough back for it because he's just gonna crush that road again.
Yeah, he will, he'll have to pay it.
Is he gonna be paying for C M E reimbursing the fifty plus thousand on the, the reengineering of this road?
So we, so we, we applied for a P O P money for the transportation contract for Bluefield Avenue and was rewarded. We have to get that out by the end of September. And so it's all coming in, and they have provided us their plans as well for the infrastructure underneath as well. And so we are working with the developer to make that happen in a way that is most efficient, and if any damage is caused then to the road, they will have to do it, they will have to carry that.
So they're, so the proposal is to do it now in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three?
Twenty three.
Even if we've got at least two more years of construction to go?
Yeah.
And I still think this is, I, I think this is a, I mean, he's gonna, and he's paying, he's gonna pay the road, he's gonna reimburse us that money?
But we have grant money that we got from transportation, and we have to spend it.
But it's, but we can spend it on, you can always modify those grants and say, if the developer's gonna pay for this, we could use it for Highland Avenue or North Main Street, you know, some, or South Main Street or someplace else, rather than a place where the developer is supposed to be paying for these improvements.
He is, however, we're going in and we are also participating in some of those improvements and for the benefit of all the residents as well. And that was part of the agreement that we reached with the compromise after, you know.
Mayor, I get that, but it's twenty twenty two, and he's got years of construction to go, so it's still a waste of whether it's Trenton's money or not, we pay towards that money, and that money can be, that grant can absolutely be amended, D O T would get it, and it could be used someplace else, and then we can get that grant again at the end to do Bluefield where there's no more construction. I just think this is a, a terrible, it's, it's just the wrong, it's the right project at the wrong time, wrong time. And, and we, there's so many roads in this town that we can't done, and to do Bluefield now is a waste of state money, it's a waste of our money, um, it's a waste of Cust's money, it's a waste of everybody's money, because it's just gonna get beaten up.
I'll talk to the engineer about it.
And the D O T, I mean, they can easily amend it, done a million times.
Any other public comments?
Yes.
Just waiting for the phone.
Busy on that phone, too, that.
I know, but if you don't answer it, they called back again, said, fine, you.
Did you buy the power warranty?
Pardon?
Did you buy the power warranty?
No, it's, you get the calls about car warranties.
Yeah, power warranty's about to expire. The spam calls, I'm just making a shot.
I'm so technologically inept.
Thank you, I name and, name and.
I'm always sort of resident from each borough. Uh, I have had concerns about Bluefield Avenue also, I just think it would be better to. Uh, I have had concerns about Bluefield Avenue also, I just think it would be better to wait until Mr. Cust is finished with his strong city. Um, I wanted to ask about what's the status with the Borough getting the free building out of Liberty Village?
So the developer closed last week, um, once they still, the building, Polo still has a lease there, I think it's for like another fifteen months. Once that lease is up, where they vacate, we'll be able to take possession of it.
And that building is just gonna be then used for the Borough Hall? Isn't it a very large building?
It is, but think about how we'll be able to have a council meeting room that holds for the forty nine people. We might be able to have our court operations in there.
Well, I think we should buy the rare cash if, of course. So now, we are a small borough, we can't
And we have a busy court, though. He's got visual on it, too.
Can, what lease the result that you're into, the town development, you said you went to the meeting, but what happened with that?
We just had a general meeting.
The Bluefield Avenue?
Bluefield Avenue.
Oh, it's about the Okay, and then I wanna make a point for trees. All these developments that are coming into the Borough. I'm glad to hear about the little park, but the trees are already there. But I'm sure most of you are aware, if you're not, then I would ask you to, to check it out, do some research. Trees are the best solution to global warming, and this town is not tree abundant. Where the tree poor, if you drive up and down some of the streets, it's sad. So I am asking this council to give direction to people that make the decisions that we get more trees and more greenery, not only is it good for the climate it's good for our physical and our mental health. So please, we have a pay more trees.
Thank you. There any other public comments? Seeing none, going once, going twice for those online? Do we have an attorney's report?
Uh, most, most everything I had to work in, I don't, I don't really remember, but one small update, I will, um, try and have this ready at the next meeting. Um, Sally and, and Mike are well aware, uh, the state passed a new law regarding lead based paint inspections for rental properties. Um, and it's, obviously we have to do them, there's going to be a cost to the borough, so we'll need to adopt ordinance that can provide for fees to be charged for the lead based paint inspections, just so if we have to, um, carry out this unfunded mandate.
Yeah.
Um, we should be able to get some
Wasn't there a part of that, that also, when I was reading it, that kind of, we, we were allowed to kind of tell the seller they have to get their own report?
We can certainly get their own report, but the borough has to somehow expect or, over a, a certain period of time, so I think we need to, um, I think their inspections are still required. Yeah, so inspections are, the review of their reports is still required, so again, that's going to be a cost to the borough, either in hiring a new employee or having an existing employee trained, um, and to, okay, take off those duties, so um, that's something we're required to do by, by statute, therefore, if you have a ordinance that lets us charge it, either the charge of work, um, yeah, the certificates of occupancy and fire inspections for the lead based paint inspection. I don't know how much housing stock in the borough will be subject to this, because anything built after nineteen seventy is exempt.
We don't have too much built after nineteen seventy eight.
Uh, but there's also, if it, if there was an existing lead based basement, and there's a certificate issued by the state, there's also some exemptions, so I don't know how much of the borough's, how the stock will actually fall into it, but it's it's going to require someone from the borough to take a look at it.
Is that falling under the building?
Um, it will be
Where does that fall?
That's the, that's the question.
Yeah, it's, the state, the statute does not give us much guidance as to where to put this, what I've seen so far is towns are adopting it, that's, adopting ordinance, is they're putting it under the building and kind of lumping it in under your list of inspections that need to be done, so this will just be
Another one.
Will just be another one that will have to be done.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm sure there will be training coming up, sure, that, that you'll be able to send someone to complete the state.
Thank you. We have a motion to pay the bills, Tilly, I'll move.
I'll still second.
Alrighty, um. Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker? Yeah?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Rosati?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly? Yes. Right.
Excellent, any reason to go into executive session? Okay, meeting is adjourned, we'll see you on the twenty fifth of July, same place, same.
Alright.